Notice of the regular board meeting. The Gun Barrel Economic Development Corporation will meet in a regular board meeting in the Gun Barrel City Council chambers located at 1716 West Main Street, Gun Barrel City, Texas, 75156 on Tuesday, August 8, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand for the invocation?
Thank you for this opportunity to meet today. Please help us to come together to make this business a reflection of the trust of our citizens and the city council that have placed this upon us. Continue to bless our police and firefighters, along with those serving in the military that protect us every day. Breathe life into our ideas, decisions, and help us to build a team that has love and respect as part of our better, our bigger being. May we be a shining example of your goodness and truth within the work we have set in front of us today and every day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call from my left.
Osborne here.
Ray here.
Schiff here.
Slinglin here.
Butler here.
Whitten here.
And we have a quorum. So citizen presentation, limited to three minutes. This item provides the opportunity for citizens to address the EDC Board of Directors in any manner, whether it's on the posted agenda or not. However, in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.041, EDC Board of Directors cannot discuss, deliberate, or take action on matters not listed on the agenda. At this time, the Board will receive citizen comments, and if necessary, may refer the matter to the EDC staff for research resolution or referral to the EDC Board on a future agenda. I'd like to take a couple of minutes in the citizen's presentation. I have a couple of things I'd like to do. The first thing I'd like to do is to read a proclamation declaring from the EDC that the Economic Development Corporation Intern Day, which is scheduled for Thursday, August 10, 2017, and it reads, "Whereas the City of Gun Barrel, where the City of Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation, the state of Texas, has always supported the young people in our community; whereas the City of Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation and the state of Texas recognizes that the young people in our community are the future; and whereas the Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation, in cooperation with the Maybank Independent School District, and under the leadership of Holland Whitten, developed the second summer intern program to assist with the recreation and enhancement of the Economic Development Corporation website, coupled with further development of the Economic Development Corporation Strategic Plan. Whereas the City of, whereas the Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation appreciates the efforts of our Economic Development Corporation interns, and they have exhibited during their summer months, we acknowledge them for all of their efforts. Now therefore, I, Stephen Schiff, President of the Economic Development Corporation of Gun Barrel City, do hereby proclaim Thursday, August 10, 2017, Economic Development Corporation Intern Day, and encourage the Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors, along with the citizens of Gun Barrel, to show their appreciation to our Economic Development Corporation interns for their time, effort, and willingness to work for the betterment of our community." So we will have this proclamation posted in our office. And gentlemen, if you would step forward, come on up front. I'd like to take the opportunity once again to present you both with a certificate of appreciation from the Economic Development Corporation on behalf of all the work that you both have done during the course of this summer internship program. And I'll read this to you, and you can fill in your own name at the appropriate time. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to both of you for your work on enhancing the Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation website and insisting, assisting in driving the Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation Strategic Plan. And this is going to be presented to you on behalf of the Board of Directors and signed by me. I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for your time and your efforts during the course of this summer internship program. Alec?
Zach?
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the effort.
And then, last but not least, I'm good. We'll get a picture of you all after this. Last but not least, I'm going to present a special Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation MVP Appreciation Award to Holland Whitten for your dedication and hard work towards enhancing the Gun Barrel City Economic Development Strategic Plan, the website, and the dedication of time to the Second Annual Summer Intern Program. And Holland, I'd like to recognize you for all the effort. On behalf of the Board, I have a certificate of appreciation for you as well. And on behalf of the Board, thank you very much for everything you've done with the summer internship program. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to you, Holland, because I think you have a comment or two.
Well, we have, we've spent the summer upgrading our website, and I just want to turn the floor over to Alec and Zach and let them walk you through it. I'd appreciate a little leeway. This is still the public, you know, public hearing part of the meeting, but it'll take slightly more than three minutes, but not much more. So with that, if you guys don't mind, you can go ahead and do your presentation.
Come in here.
Live here.
Shop here.
Build here.
Work here.
Venture here.
Relax here.
Retire.
Hello, I'm Alec Terry.
And I'm Zach Rose. This, we are high school students, and this is our second summer to work on the EDC website. This summer goals were develop demographics to support site selection teams and prospective businesses, create a comprehensive property listing section, refresh the homepage and content to retain existing users and attract new ones, and add analytics to the site.
The front page, or homepage, makes a first impression and sets the tone for our site. The slideshow and captions we read off are our new marketing message. The "Do It Here" messages are meant to be relatable to all our audiences, visitors, businesses, and residents, and to reinforce our "Something for Everyone" message.
Along with the slider, we've streamlined the front page with small, simple icons, our mission statement, and social network links. It's clean and simple. It also looks nice on the mobile version of the website.
Demographics was our top priority for development. We emphasized the lakeplex, a regional view of the lake as a market and labor force. The demographic statistics are from the United States Census Bureau, updated in 2015. We pulled numbers from six, from the six zip codes around the lake, approximately a 20-minute drive time. Traffic counts from Texas Department of Transportation supports the lakeplex concept with Gun Barrel City as its center. Data on the business environment, labor force, and consumers rounded the lakeplex picture. We also included population cluster analysis from Esri that adds more depth to the consumer picture. Additional demographic data is provided for Texas, a big picture, and Gun Barrel City itself.
Comprehensive property listings are important because they're a site selection qualifier, which means if you don't have good property listings, you'll get eliminated from the short list of cities being considered. We started with a list of EDC properties. Here's a listing for our church street property, an acre and a half greenfield, with street frontage on two sides. We're working with the local real estate firms to add their properties to our list. They are cooperating with us.
Along with a new look for the front page, we have updated the site to improve the look and ease of use. The EDC administrative and marketing assistant, Ms. Yarborough, had developed a list of needed changes and reviewed our work. We appreciate all her help. Here's an example, our meetings page, that provides agendas, minutes, and videos of latest first order. It is designed to be user-maintainable by Ms. Yarborough.
We are also implementing Google Analytics to help analyze the effectiveness of our website. Google Analytics will provide statistics like total page views and unique users. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
So as you can see, there's been a lot of work done during the course of the summer. I would urge each of the Board members to, is the page up live now?
It's not. It will be after this week.
Okay. So after this week, I urge all the Board members to check it out and take a look at it. So thank you again for all the hard work, and Holland, thank you for coordinating it. So on to item number one. Discuss or take action to approve the EDC meeting minutes of July 11, 2017. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the EDC meeting minutes of July 11, 2017.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Ray, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Butler, yes.
Whitten, yes.
Item number two. Discuss or take action to receive an updated report for the July 2017 financials. Holland? Well, first, let me take a motion first, and then we'll get into discuss.
I'll make a motion. We discuss or take action to receive an updated report from the July 2017 financials.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion, Holland?
Well, our CPA's office flooded recently, so we can sympathize. So because of that and some other circumstances, the July financials aren't available this month. We'll have July and August both next month. Last year's auditor has elected not to perform audits for the EDC and the city next year, so we're working with the city to replace our auditor. And I also wanted to mention an inquiry from a council member concerning Lakeland Medical. There was a $150,000 loan that was budgeted last year, or actually, this fiscal year. It was issued, the loan was issued this fiscal year, and therefore, there's nothing in the next year's budget for Lakeland Medical.
Yep. Noted.
And otherwise, there's nothing unusual. As I said last month, we were about a quarter, or 75% through the year, and we'd spent about a quarter of our budget, so we're well underrunning.
Any other discussion? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Ray, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Slinglin, yes.
Butler, yes.
Whitten, yes.
Item number three. Discuss or take action to approve EDC conference room expenses for 12 new executive chairs and a glass top for the conference table, not to exceed the amount of $3,000. Dollars, excuse me. Holland? Oh, wait a minute. Let me get a motion first, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve EDC conference room expenses not to exceed $3,000.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Go ahead, Holland, sorry.
Well, our existing chairs are, were acquired in 1997. The chairs have a six-year, depreciable life, so those have been in service 20 years. They've been, they could have been depreciated more than three times. So the new chairs would also help us with completing our conference room upgrade, which has a noticeable effect in marketing to our guests. So the other thing that we have in there is a glass top to protect the table and extend its life. So all that we can do for less than $3,000.
Any other discussion?
What are we going to do with the existing stuff?
Donate. Donate. Any other discussion? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Ray, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Slinglin, yes.
Butler, yes.
Whitten, yes.
Item number four. Discuss or take action to receive a report on all commercial property listings for the EDC website. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to receive a report on the commercial property listings on the EDC website.
Motion and second. Holland?
We have four properties that are, that are marketable. We've excluded Big Chief. You saw our listings on the new website, and we're in the process of getting comparables for pricing, or market pricing, and our objective is to either sell or use those properties as incentives to attract new businesses and get some more good jobs in here.
Any other discussion? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Ray, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Slinglin, yes.
Butler, yes.
Whitten, yes.
Item number five. Discuss or take action to accept a proposal for all commercial property listings on the EDC website, not to exceed $5,000 annually. Can I have a motion?
I move we spend not to exceed $5,000 to maintain property listings on the EDC website.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Holland, again?
Well, as Zach mentioned during the presentation there, property listings are needed to help us with site selection. If there aren't those, it's a reason for a site selection team or a company to eliminate us from consideration. So we want to get comprehensive listings of what's available in Gun Barrel City. We've looked into ways of doing that. There's an outfit called LoopNet, and one called Excelgent, and we evaluated both their products, and they fall short in three ways. They're, they don't have a comprehensive list of all the available products. They're more expensive than we want to spend, and they still require a lot of maintenance. So what I'd like to propose is that we have part-time support of about 50 hours a month to, to maintain property listings, and this includes not just the EDC properties, but also commercial properties. We've talked to real estate agents in town, and they're willing to allow us to list their properties on our site. So it would be a one, one-stop shop for looking for commercial property.
Right.
Which is, there's, it's nowhere else. So that's the proposal, is 50 hours a month at $8 an hour would be about $4,800 a year. And included in that is some other website maintenance that could be done as well. So that's the idea.
So all in, all in attempt to attract people to the area so they can look at a site, decide on whether they want to build, whether the business they want to bring, without having to go through any other realtor at that particular point while they're looking for, you know, for property. If you couple that with what was done to the website with the upgraded demographics that you're going to see, I think this is a, this is a two-pronged approach that's really going to help start promoting our city in a much greater light than it's been in the past years.
Who'd be doing this work?
Our thought is to use Alec Terry, one of our interns here. He could do it as a part-time job. He'll be a senior this year in school.
Does this include MLS listings?
It will.
Right. We, we have MLS listings. I don't know if you still have that up, if you pull up that property page.
No, no, no. You're misunderstanding the question. Does it?
Oh, would it have the MLS?
Does this include our properties being listed on MLS?
So here are the MLS listings.
Yep. So the answer is yes.
Right now, these are, you know, they come from a, this is from one company, but this is the kind of information that'd be out there for all the MLS listings.
Right.
So just to clarify, our EDC properties would be listed on the MLS?
No. Actually, we're going to a real estate broker to list our products. So the answer is yes.
And who, and who is that?
It's Robert Blasey.
Caldwell Banker.
Caldwell Banker. Thank you. So that's where we're getting the comps and the, the market pricing, which is what was lacking for our properties.
Don't we have to join the MLS, or what documents do we need to give them to get on there? Because I didn't know that you can just put a thing on the MLS from here.
The real estate company puts it on MLS. We don't have anything to do with that.
You're, you're talking, you're talking about our properties will be listed with Caldwell Banker.
Right.
At what percentage commission?
We haven't, I don't think we've gone that far yet.
Well, then I think this proposal's premature if we don't know what it's going to cost.
We know what the standard costs are on commercial property.
There, there's not a cost for, for these. I mean, they've agreed to give us these listings and for us to put them on our website.
Yeah, but that comes with a contract having listed the property with them.
We haven't signed any contracts.
So we don't have to sign a contract listing with Blasey in order to get on this service?
To get on the MLS, you do. That's why I asked the question.
That's what I'm just.
You have to have the property listed with a, with a broker in order to put it on MLS.
Okay, well, it, it sounds like there may be more discussion needed on this point. I thought we had already kind of decided that we were going to list these properties. So we have the, the big 54 acres behind the park, eight acres, mid-city properties, the 1.4 acres on Church Street.
Right.
And Bronner Hall, which we're not going to list until, you know, after August.
Right.
But, but those are the four, and I thought we were in accord that we were going to list them. If not, we can table this.
Any more discussion? Amended motion?
Well, I think one of the, I think the 5,000 annually is just for us to have somebody, if I'm getting this right, is just to have somebody updating our website.
That's exactly right.
That has nothing to do with the MLS, it's just...
Nope, just updating the properties that are available on the website.
I mean, are we getting enough hits on our website to just 5,000 dollars a year in, in upgrading? That's my question.
Well, I think, I think it's a, I think it's a very good question, however, we haven't really been marketing properties on our website for years.
Yeah, and it's kind of a chicken/egg question.
Correct. That's exactly where I was going.
Yeah, Google Analytics, we're going to do analytics on the website here.
Any other discussion?
Well, this is the first time I've heard that we were, we were wanting to market the properties with a realtor, so I must have been out of town or something at a meetings, but I never, I never heard of this, that this is what the, the directors wanted to do. I'm with Rob, I think, $5,000 for that amount of money to update our website with, you know, in, in light of all of the recent sales of the commercial properties.
Well, I think, I think you're misinterpreting. We're, all we're doing is marketing these on our website. You know, we haven't engaged any services through, through a formal agreement with any realtor, and all we're doing is putting these and making them available on our website.
That's the part that we saw in the presentation.
Part, part of the issue is that we've always been talking about marketing and making sure that we have everything available so that when somebody hits our website, that they get a really good feel for exactly what's going on within our city and with the EDC. This is an enhanced tool that will help us to market these properties and maybe even bring new people in who have no idea that these properties are even available. So, you know, there's, this is, this is a discussion point that we're having to make sure that we're all in agreement, that we agree, number one, to, to go back to our strategic plan, which specifically calls out the fact that we need to enhance our marketing on both properties and, and development of businesses, and to make sure that we are hitting it at the focal point where people visit, and that's our website. And our website has really, unfortunately, not been up to par for the past little while. I think these are all, these are all ways to enhance.
Right. You know, it wasn't my intention to get out in front of the, the Board here, so if we want to table this, discuss it for, decide how we're going to move forward, that's fine by me.
Yep. Any more discussion? Amended motion? Rob? Do you want to table? Or do we want to vote?
I, I, I think I'd like to table it. I'd like to make a motion to table the commercial property listings of EDC website, our properties.
I have a motion to table, I have a second?
Second.
Second. Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Ray, yes.
I'll abstain.
Slinglin, yes.
Butler, no.
Abstain for what reason?
Well, I, I'll change mine and make it a yes.
Whitten, yes.
So we've got three?
Four, I think. Yeah, four yeses and one no.
No?
No, we got...
Let me pull, let me, let me pull again. Start over there.
The, the motion is to table it, right?
The motion is to table.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm voting no.
I'm voting yes.
No.
Yes.
So a motion passes to table. Item number six.
Just for clarification, I'd like it on the record. The reason I asked why you abstained is because we've run into this recently, and an abstention without a reason is considered a no vote.
Yeah. So it was a no vote. Item number six. Discuss or take action to approve the revised lease agreement with the City of Gun Barrel City for the property located at 1720 West Main Street, Gun Barrel City, Texas, 75156, currently known as the EDC office and EDC conference room. In your packet is a lease agreement that I'd like to, I'm sorry, can I get a motion first? Sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised lease agreement between the city and the EDC for the EDC office.
I got a motion and a second. Just real quick, the only thing that's changed between the lease that we currently have, where we were trading dollars, is the amount on the monthly lease and the amount, the amended amount would be listed, and you'll see it on the, I believe it's the first page, page one, that we would like to propose that the Board accept and ultimately present to city council $750 per month as our lease agreement for the, for the next year, and then we would have to revisit it after one year because this lease agreement is just for one year.
How much are we paying them now?
We're paying $1,000, but it's offset with the use of the fire equipment over there, so they're paying us $1,000. So there's really money that's being exchanged but not being accounted for. So the fire department is opening, what's the date of the fire department moving out? So the, okay. So eventually, we're going to have to, we'll have to have a lease agreement, because right now, we have no lease agreement with the city.
It's actually, Keith, that there is an agreement, but it's a net zero.
Right.
Either way.
I remembered that part.
Either way.
Right.
We just got to do something because we're not going to be able to charge the city $1,000 anymore.
Right. Any other discussion? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Ray, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Slinglin, yes.
Butler, yes.
Whitten, yes.
Item number seven. Discuss or take action to approve demolition plans for the properly formerly known as Bronner Hall, 1810 West Main Street, in the amount not to exceed $15,000 and to be executed by KK Maintenance Incorporated to improve marketability of said property. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the demolition not to exceed $15,000 of what's formerly known as Bronner Hall. known as Bronner Hall.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Rob? Any discussion?
No, other than the fact that I can't believe they're living up to a three-year-old bid, but...
I can tell you that it wasn't when I first got it, so we went back and negotiated a little bit, so this is a bid, the original...
We've already approved this, and this is in our books.
But, but this is to be executed now, and so we had to get an updated bid. That's why it has to be re-approved by the board.
But we have the money already allocated.
The money is already in our books.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
No.
Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Ray, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Slinglin, yes.
Butler, yes.
Witten, yes.
Item number eight. Discuss or take action to approve an expenditure not to exceed $3,000 for the improvement and development of a nature bike trail through the EDC property that contains 54 acres located behind the Gunbarrel City Pavilion and Maintenance Building. Can I get a motion?
Go ahead, Rob.
I make a motion that we approve an expenditure not to exceed $3,000 for the improvement and development of a nature bike trail through EDC property that contains 54 acres located behind GBC Pavilion and Maintenance Building.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Holland?
In, in looking over these properties, I discovered this one is completely unused. It's wild, it's rough. So my thought was, with a small amount of tractor work, we can build a perimeter trail around it, make a hiking and biking trail out of it, and make one step toward clearing it. And some of that $3,000 would also go towards signage and a rudimentary trailhead. So I think that would attract bikers and hikers to the area and between residents and visitors, and I'd estimate that it'd be at least equal to the impact of a skate park and, because there are many more hikers and bikers out there than there are skaters. Over time, we could progressively clear more paths and gradually improve the track, and the big benefit, too, would be to expose the parcel to potential buyers out there. So right now, it's just off the beaten path.
I think it would also lend itself to having more people visit down there.
Right.
And feel more comfortable about visiting down there. I think it would also enhance people wanting to use the pavilion area for other events and what have you, so... Any other discussion?
Yeah. I absolutely agree that a bike trail is a fantastic idea. I have a little problem, and it's going to be the elephant in the room. The $3,000 is for signage and hauling a rudimentary trailhead.
Right. Right.
Any idea what the state says about ADA compliance on a trailhead and a bike trail? Because I hate to tell you, but this is about to go from $3,000 to $15,000 in about two seconds.
You're right. I didn't, you know, I did...
I'm only laughing, I'm only laughing because we played this game before.
It's too, it's too true.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'll bring it up. I mean, I haven't seen a wheelchair going up and down our skate park yet either, but it costs us six grand to do it.
I'm 6,400. I'm, I'm laughing with you, so...
I, I'd love to see a bike trail out there, or, and a hiking trail.
So a waiver, a waiver's not in the cards for that because it's a, you know, it's a, it's supposed to be for a mountain biking trail, you know?
Yeah, but the skate park was supposed to be for skateboarders.
Right.
I hate to tell you, I think we need to probably table this.
All right.
Well, pending, pending more investigation from an ADA complacency standpoint?
Yeah.
And, and bids. Yeah.
Okay.
Once we get the ADA, we'll know what we're trying to bid for.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're going to run into some situations where in other, in other cities that have bike trails, their trailheads are specifically designed to keep motorized vehicles off of them, you know, for all kinds of things. And, and while I agree 100% with, with the idea, I think trying to get this done for $3,000 is not going to happen.
Okay. Noted. You want to amend the motion? Or do you just want to table it? Pending further investigation?
I haven't researched it, so I, I couldn't, I couldn't come up with a number.
Right.
So I think we have to table.
All right.
We got a question from the...
Does somebody want it? Sorry. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Does it, does it say in there that the ADA people have no common sense? Is there an asterisk for that or anything?
Just say no, Jim.
All right.
So I, I think the safest thing to do at this point, Holland, if you'll agree with me, is just to table it, and let's get some bids and find out.
Can I, can I get a motion to table?
The problem is, is if we go ahead and do it in the $3,000 genre, my fear is that not only will we run into voices from Asunder, but we will also run into liability problems. The ADA people.
Okay, thank you. All right. So can I have a motion to table this then?
I make a motion to table item number eight concerning a bike trail.
Second.
And further discussions? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Ray, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Slinglin, yes.
Butler, yes.
Witten, yes.
Item number, oh, we're going to, I'm sorry. The Gunbarrel City EDC will now hold at a closed executive session meeting pursuant to the provisions provided of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in Texas Government Code 551074 to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the administrative marketing assistant. Item number nine will re-deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the administrative marketing assistant. It's now 536. The Gunbarrel City Economic Development Corporation will now reconvene into regular session pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code to take any action necessary regarding the items discussed in the executive session.